So I had an awesome incident in my garage. One time for live, one time for dead. It's like a friend.
That is huge.
Probably one that broke and they turned it on.
Buddies.
This is so fun.
We had to go back and get hers on. Is John doing something for sure? Alright.
There you go. Alright.
Thanks, village.
Just some tires, some vents. You know what? This looks good on you.
Well, it comes off as soon as I'm, well, I grew this, but I, yeah, colored it.
So proud of you. It looks good.
I had to, uh, I had to enhance it.
Do we know Cindy's gonna be here? Um. Yeah, you've got it.
Oh my. Alright, now we just gotta have Cindy. What are you? I'm super hoppy. Oh.
Don't worry, be hoppy.
Don't worry, be hoppy, that's right. Well, this is, I had to bring this out.
We need to get started.
Yes, we do. Okay. Let's start at one. Who are we missing? Oh, Cindy.
Yeah.
Tell you what, the brightness of this vest is really messing with my eyes.
It's pretty bright.
I'm not really used to wearing, like, really. Gotta be really important to get a pink.
I need the inner, see, someone stole the inner.
No, I got it, I come from L E S. Yeah, I went out to L E S and they gave me a bunch of stuff. That's why I get the vest, the L E S, and I think the hat's is L E S too.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah. All good.
Or just missing Cindy?
Yeah. She's missing Cindy. She's gonna be a, be a Startran driver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think we should get started, 'cause I have to run out before our next meeting.
Oh, well.
Mike, do you, or would you like to approach?
Okay.
Please approach, yes.
Approach and join us.
With trepidation and.
Okay. Would you like to, oh, I'm sorry, would you guys like to get started?
Yeah, let's go.
I guess yours was supposed to, I guess that clocks a little fast, but.
Okay. Um, yeah, we can do that.
We expect Cindy will be here soon, but we don't wanna shortchange you.
Mike, pirate, a genteel duke. He's, he's, I think.
Mike's a pirate.
Is that a pirate?
Or is he captain of a hook?
Well, I did have a hook, does he? No.
Nope.
Did you see the Pirates in Iceland lost? There's a pirate party in Iceland.
Pirate party in.
And they almost had enough votes to form the majority government in their parliament.
Oh.
Called the Pirate Party. And they're slumped.
You would know?
Yes.
Hello, did you check the pre-council meetings next week? Probably.
Why wouldn't I? Oh, pre-council, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to get correctors.
Yeah.
So we can wait just a couple more minutes for Cindy, we're scheduled to start at one fifteen, so.
Oh.
Oh, good, sorry.
Okay, Mike, well, are you, what are you?
I mean, I. Whatever you'd like me to be, no, a captain or a pirate, yeah.
So you're not a Venetian trader?
Could be.
Sounds good. Good, see you on Friday then, for sure.
Wow, Vicky, whoa, I didn't know that. I didn't see the sequin pants.
Angel lady.
Alright, that is really good, Vicky.
I'm impressed. I love it.
That's great. So who, who was I doing one night? Who was, who was sort of after? Friends and Lyrians.
Larian has been working on this for as long as we've been on the council. To try to get us to dress up and. Like Jonathan Cook.
Think everybody was.
Everyone, everyone was going to, except.
Except Jonathan.
Except John, yeah.
That was, that would be easy.
I got a briefcase at the Goodwill.
White t-shirt, socks, and white tennis shoes.
New Balance shoes.
White, white.
And a baby.
Sports coat. Yeah.
I had to get a picture of you in this public works.
I actually saw the crews working out there today, and so, yeah. So I've got my hood on.
Sit for fifteen minutes and not have to worry about much. Did see the mayor's award back songs today.
Yes.
I work for L E S. See, L E S. Well, you see, it's against the law to impersonate an officer. I was thinking of going there, I had everything set up, and I thought, you know what? I could go all the way with this.
Yeah. And be in trouble. I love what he did. And I'm sure they would all bail you out.
So, do you update on the microphones?
Kobe, I need my stuffings, like my Santa Claus Viagra.
There's nothing inside, so it sits down.
Used to be there with two separate systems.
Alright.
Should we take a group?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Yeah, we didn't get a Startran driver.
Startran driver's coming.
You know what, though? I got ambulance number nine today, and I get to drive it for five hundred miles. And I have a clicker now, too. Did you get a clicker? For your fire, you know, how we in the fire department have those clickers? We make every red light turn green.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Did I tell you my story about my first day, my first week in council? Nineteen ninety-nine, I go to D L A, and it's old offices in the, uh, old Sears building, whatever, there. And Cattie, where we're there now. And I go huffing puffing in, five minutes late.
Perfect.
And I said, you know, someone looks at me, the board of the D L A, and I said, you know, this game's pretty good. And they said, yeah, you know, all they do is call nine-one-one, they send a fire truck for me. And a fire truck had just gone by, and everyone heard it. And I said on top of that, I get a clicker, make every red light turn green.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They were, they were buying it for.
They were buying it, and I had to find a breakdown and tell them the truth. No. It was a good story while it lasted. Okay. Alright.
So, we're ready to start whenever you're ready, so.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you need to start us, Larian, because we're televised?
Oh, great.
Or we're not televised?
Well, I'll just mention that there's a copy of Open Meetings Act in the back of the room, and we're very happy to have you here to give us a, an update on Startran.
Thank you. I am Mike Davis with Startran, and we have Emma Hansen here, who is with Yacht. And she'll kind of explain a little bit what Yacht is as part of the presentation. And in fact, we'll go ahead and get started with the presentation, and then have time for questions at the end.
Okay. Um, so, like he said, my name's Emma Hansen, and I am the account executive at Yacht. Um, Yacht is the student-run ad agency connected to U N L. Um, we kind of get real-world experience working with real clients, so I've been working on the Startran account um, all last spring and through this fall. So, um, Startran came to Yacht when they were working with their T D P and the new routes, and they thought that this would be a great opportunity to, um, kind of have a campaign to get the city excited about these new changes, and kind of figure out a way to grab their attention. So that is where we got back to, um, this no keys, no commitment. So, um, starting off last spring, we spent three or four months solely on research. And we needed to figure out not only about the Lincoln public transit system, but also about other successful campaigns that have worked with public transportation, to name a few, the, we, Austin, Texas did a really good one, as well as Missoula. Um, so those kind of gave us, sparked our idea. So then we went out and did some research in the community, so we sent out some surveys, held a focus group. Um, and the purpose of this was to figure out the problem, figure out why we even needed to do anything. And we figured out that, um, not only was there a negative stigma surrounding, um, public transportation within the city of Lincoln, um, a lot of people also just aren't exactly sure how to ride the bus, and, um, they feel uncomfortable not knowing. So this was an insight for us that we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, so moving forward, we tried to figure out what our target audience would be. So, a lot of people kind of give us grief that, oh, you chose millennials because you are millennials, but we figured out that in the city of Lincoln, there are three colleges here, we do make up a large population. Um, millennials were a great target for this specific campaign. Not many of them are riding, and that is a goal, is to get new riders on the bus as well. So they were a good, um, target audience to choose. Uh, moving forward, we tried to figure out what the tone of this was gonna be, what our voice was gonna be, and we needed to keep in mind that, um, it needed to be a little bit trendy, a little bit approachable, but also out there enough that it would be noticeable. Um, so, um, we're, our campaign is aiming to increase ridership among all demographics, using millennials as the influencers, so not only are we just targeting millennials, but we're using them, um, to kind of kick it off. But all those people surrounding them that are not millennials, they can influence them. So if they can get on, they can tell them what they're doing as well, tell them all the benefits, all those things. So, from our research, um, we came up with five key insights that we went through with Mike and Kitty. And the first one is that Lincolnites drive, and this was big for the campaign moving forward. Um, also, we make decisions based on practicality. Millennials expect instant gratification. They feel uneducated on how to ride the bus, and millennial, you can reach them by utilizing strategic channels, which kind of played into the execution, um, towards the end. So what we recommended based on all of this, um, is a millennial-driven strategy, like we said, leveraging technology and social media to reach them. Um, multimodal focus, so keeping in the forefront of our minds that they do drive, and that there are other modes of transportation, but figuring out how to shape this as a way, um, to show them what the bus can do for them, and use them as the influencers that they can trend set. So, um, the campaign that we came up with is no keys, no commitment, try the Lincoln bus system. Um, our positioning statement to kind of encompass this whole idea is that whether you're commuting to work, catching a flight, or heading downtown, as a member of the Lincoln community, you lead an active, progressive lifestyle. The Lincoln bus system is a viable alternative to your transportation needs. So basically, what this means is that through, um, all of our research, we, like I mentioned, um, driving is the norm here. So, you know, targeting or, um, sending out a campaign that kind of acts like the bus is going to be your only form of transportation is not really worth it, and it's not correct. So we needed to show them that, um, the bus can be a choice, everyone likes to choose. Um, so choosing, or showing them why this is a good choice. So as far as creative execution, um, we have, I have some examples moving forward, but we're, we have some signage, interior and bus stop. Um, it kind of uses that upward arrow the same as the city branding, so that it's recognizable to people in Lincoln. Um, we created a rider guide, which is, um, a little booklet that'll be on the bus, as well as, um, we'll hope to put them around town. Um, kind of going along with this, people feel uneducated. So it's a book that encompasses all things as far as how to get on, what you need, um, what you can do on the bus, some main routes that are of interest to people. Um, something that they can just breeze through on their way, and that kind of makes the bus seem like more of a simple, easy experience. Um, we have a bus wrap that I have an example of that we will be unveiling on Friday. Um, social media management, we created an Instagram page for the Lincoln bus system, and we kept up their Facebook. Um, so we're using it right now, we have a First Friday event to kind of kick off the, um, T D P, all the new routes and changes. Um, so that's kind of been used for that right now, to get people excited about it, but it will be continued on for a couple of months, just to keep everyone in the loop. Um, we also have short video series that will be posted on social media. There's a series of five, which I'll go through a little bit more, as well as this First Friday launch event. Um, as far as more of the traditional media, we do have some radio ads that are going out. Um, we have Lincoln Today print ads, Lincoln General Star print ads, and some press releases to get, um, that other audience also. So here is what the bus wrap is gonna look like, and on First Friday, it will be the first time that the public gets to see this. Kind of going with the blue and green, the upward angles, that is the, um, Lincoln arrow, Ride Lincoln, and the back says, leave your car in the garage, try the Lincoln bus system. Um, here are some of the bus stop signage, so we have a series of five, these are just three of my favorites that I chose, and it kind of fits that whole know this, know that theme, so that everyone will, it's cohesive, and they'll know that it all fits together. So love biking, no problem. Um, love texting, no problem, that's a big one with this whole no texting and driving. Um, and then, no parking, no problem. And then this is one of, these will go inside the bus, no keys, no problem, um, no keys, no commitment. Again, just to kind of be a cohesive piece to get people's attention. Um, here's an example, so this is a Facebook post, so this First Friday event, um, basically, if you don't know what First Friday is, it's a bunch of galleries open up, and people come in and look at all the art, so a majority of the attendees are, um, not only artists themselves, but just interested in art, so we're trying to showcase that. One of our goals in the beginning was to show that, show the friendly faces on the bus. Um, kind of with that whole negative stigma, show them that all types of people ride the bus. So with this First Friday event, um, we're highlighting a couple different artists via social media um, to show that whether you are into art, if you're athletic, if you do this or that, um, all those types of people are on the bus. Um, and then here was just an example of an Instagram post that we did, I'll read it so you can kind of get the tone, um, of the whole, of all the copy. It says, don't you love leaving a coffee date and being greeted by a parking slip tucked under your windshield wiper? Yeah, didn't think so. Leave your parking problems in the past, and try taking the Lincoln bus system the next time you go meet your perpetually caffeinated friend. Um, so the videos that I mentioned, there will be five, and they follow the, um, educational insights. So the first one is what you need to get on and how you can find your routes. They're all within thirty to forty seconds, so they're really short, so people will watch the whole thing. Um, how you get on the bus, what you can do when you're on the bus versus driving, things like reading, texting, answering emails, all those things that everyone needs to do, not just millennials. Um, how to get off, and then one on bike and busing, because we think that would be, resonate well with everybody. Um, and then just a little more about this First Friday event. So this Friday, from six to eight, we have Tower Square. Um, there will be, K F R X is gonna be there, we'll have a booth, coffee house, cookies, coffee. Um, there'll be music and giveaways, so basically, we are going to use the Star fifty-five, um, shuttle route, which goes around town, kind of down in the Haymarket, since that hits most of the galleries. And anyone who gets on, whether they're taking it as a shuttle service for these galleries, or if it's just they're getting on the bus, which is what we want them to do, they can enter to win, um, a gift card for some local favorites, um, as well as some different, like, biking gear and things like that. Things to get people excited, because the goal with this is that if we can get them on the bus, we're confident that we can show them what the bus can do for them, but before you get them to step on the bus once, it's kind of hard to reach them. So, um, just doing this whole campaign, basically, we just need to get their attention. Um, everyone knows that the bus exists, but they don't necessarily know how easy it is to ride, they don't know the benefits that they can get from it. Um, so just getting their attention, getting them excited, kind of giving the, um, public transit system a fresh look with these changes is what we're going for. So, yeah, it's, we've had an awesome time working with Mike and Kitty for about a year now. Um, and they've been very helpful. We, we are students, and this was kind of a unique client to get right away for me. Um, but it's turned out to be the best one, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, those are great.
Thank you.
See your videos?
They are being worked on right now, we have to finish the animation at the end, but they should be out, I think, middle of the month is when they're gonna be released.
Yeah. Anything else, questions?
Thanks. Um, so, before doing this, were you a bus rider?
I was not, but I, I've ridden it a few times, um, and I need to figure out, I, in the process of like being back and forth, so I need to figure out like the route that works for me, but I was stunned, and, I mean, I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and like, the bus never really caught my attention, but after working on this, just public transit in general has really, it's opened up my eyes for sure, as well as everyone at Yacht with me, and everyone who knows that we've been working on this client. So, even if, I mean, we've already hit a lot of our target market just from being where we are and being who we are, um, so, yeah, I think it's, it was a great choice for us to work together.
Mike, will you have any, um, ways to sort of measure the, the launch? And see if, uh, the First Friday event has a big uptick in riders, or if the week afterwards, or?
Yeah, very good question, so we have all these new changes, uh, coming about, and we will be monitoring those changes, uh, very heavily. We're probably gonna have, so this month, um, the month of October and the month of November are free, um, and that's part of the promotion that we're doing as well. We have new route schedules, we have new bus stops that are out. Uh, we, um, have hired, um, nine drivers just came out of training to drive the service. We've been training them on the new service. And, uh, so we have all these exciting things happening. We are going to closely monitor these services and be reporting back on how well the changes are, are, uh, working. The month of November's not going to be a very good month to have statistics only because it's free, and, and things go up and down when things are free. And, but the month of December, we expect to start to have much better data on a day-to-day basis, even though we have the holidays in that month. And we anticipate a small drop in ridership, and then, uh, be able to, as we continue to bring new riders on, to be able to see that go back up, and reach full ridership after, uh, two to three years. So we expect it can take that long. And we're, already, we have some small things that we know we're going to be looking at. We had over three hundred people attend open houses last month, uh, for new services, and we received some, some additional feedback at that point in time. So we know there's gonna be changes along the way that we'll be making. Uh, probably the next change, we anticipate right now, would be May of next year. Um, and we'll, we'll be, uh, doing that. We do have the Startran Advisory Board, uh, that meets once a month, and we will be reporting, uh, additional monitor, um, additional information back to them regarding the new services. And then, of course, we'll have a report back to council as well.
Is all November's free, is that right? The bus, all the routes, or just some of the routes?
All the routes are free in the month of October and November. And that's a good idea, only because you have people that miss their trip, and then they want a refund, and it just makes it easier across the board to, um, help introduce the service to people, as well as, uh, make some of those hassles less of a hassle and more exciting to be a part of the new service.
So, um, I like the tagline of, you know, trying it. How, how do we get that to be a more sticky thing with millennials? So that they're just, they're trying it and they're, they're staying as a rider?
Right. Um, so, we kind of went back and forth with it. I think not so much, I mean, just the know this, know that is just catchy. Um, so that's kind of where it will stick in their mind. But basically, um, all of, like, the social media, all, like, the rider guide, all these things kind of show, um, what you can do on the bus that you couldn't do in your car, which is kind of the main thing, because most of us are gonna drive, and that's our first choice is driving.
Sure.
But if you can get me to sit on the bus, or any millennial to sit on the bus, and show them that they're not gonna get pulled over and get a two hundred dollar ticket for texting and driving, like, that's worth it. And showing them, making it easy for them, because they want it easy and they want it simple. Um, so showing them that, um, you know, helping them figure out which route they need to be on, I think it just, it'll become a habit and get into their routine, and start doing all these things, like finishing their homework, or answering their email, um, eating their breakfast, whatever. Those kind of things, I think, are enough to stick in their mind. But the whole, the tagline, that was just the catchy, know this, know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how do you keep that message going then? Because you're, you, you'll set, you'll set a benchmark of, hey, try this, and then you're gonna have to build them into.
Right.
An implementation phase of like, oh, yeah, I.
I did it.
I'm doing my homework on the bus, or I. I'm, you know, finishing a project.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, how do you get them to that next step?
Um, I mean, that will come. I mean, that will come in time just because the whole transit system is changing. I think that, that, I mean, this whole campaign is just a kickoff. So I think that would be a whole next step. Kind of seeing, it will be based on if they stay, if they don't. If they do, I mean, it's going out and talking to them and figuring out why and what's keeping them on and kind of, I mean, advertising that too, but that's a whole second step after this.
How long does this campaign last then?
So this kicks, this kicks off this week. We have social media running through the first of the year. I don't know exactly how long they plan to keep all the signage and things up, but I don't know. That's kind of up to them, I guess. But for at least two to three months for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With just new content.
Thank you. Is there a vehicle from which they can leave feedback?
Yeah, well, via social media is kind of where we're getting feedback right now. We, I mean, we are at, I think we got fifty-two followers in the first week, which is, I don't know how familiar you are with social media, but that's big in the first week. And then once all this kicks off, we hope to push it in their face even more to get them to follow us. And then they can leave comments, they can send messages, all those types of things. So we're kind of monitoring that with Mike and Kitty as we go.
And do we invite them to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's in all of the, all the print and all those things.
My other question had to do with the, is it called the, what, the Google app that we were talking about? GPS tracking?
Yes.
Is that, is that already launched?
The, no, Google has not been launched yet. We needed to start the service tomorrow to be able to get the GTFS feed to be able to submit to Google. And I don't know how long that's going to take, but we needed our system to be updated with the new stops in place to be able to then. And we do have the program already to run that data. So we're anticipating starting tomorrow to be able to run that data and then submit it to Google.
Great, and then we'll have then the ability before the end of the year to push it out to everybody that's following and wherever our media push is going?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, that, we can update that with new information as we go. That's, we're, I mean, we've planned it out, but of course, as changes come, we can always modify those as we go.
Well, one of the things with the increased use of Uber, you know, we're all used to being able to see where our cars are now, like how far away is your ride?
Right.
So I think that's going to be just a really natural transition
I agree.
for the Star Trans.
So do we have an idea how much we're spending on this campaign at this point?
We're right around $30,000 in, in overall marketing. Once we have things printed and, and things ready to go. There's about another $13,000. That cost doesn't include the new schedules. Those are more part of our regular day-to-day type businesses. And that, that's another $13,000. So about $30,000 of additional types of advertising. And we do, even with that $30,000, there's some, you know, newspaper ads and things that we planned to do along the way, so that's a little bit of part of that as well. And we do have Kitty too here, if there's anything that she would like to add.
I'm just behind the scenes.
I can add something to that. One of the things we talked about too is yacht is, we're not, we don't have the exact number, but it's probably a fourth or an eighth of what it would cost to work with another like advertising agency in the city of Lincoln. So them working with us, I think, has really reduced that.
Okay, and I was going to say, I really agree with your, the idea that we're going to do this, free rides for the first month, two months? Well, is it Octo, December and November?
October and November.
Okay, so October's pretty much
Done, yes.
Done. So, and do you have any estimate of what those revenues that we're sacrificing?
Yes. It's approximately $60,000 for each
Month.
Month, yes.
So right now, we're into around $100,000 to launch?
Correct.
And including everything?
Right.
John?
Just following up one item there, Mike, on October, then you've been free rides all of the month already? Or just started at the end?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the status on the trolleys?
The status on the trolleys is they have been ordered and we're anticipating them early next year. So we don't have an exact date on that yet, but they are in process of being built.
And are those the ones that will go on the downtown Route 55 or?
Yep. The, it's one shuttle that runs the Route 55, circulates downtown. And then there's a shuttle that's kind of a backup too with that, so there's two.
And then could you also give an update on the use of smart cards in the system? So you can get, you know, even more and more to a cashless type approach?
Good question. The, right now, we have, you can pay cash on the buses as well as a fare card. And you can do a thirty-one day pass, you can do a punch pass for twenty rides. The thirty-one day pass, we also have a low income pass. So low income is eight, eight dollars. The regular pass is seventeen dollars. And the, they're basically just a paper card that goes, is inserted into the fare box. And that's our current fare medium. Now our fare boxes are capable of utilizing smart cards, which is a contactless card that, or some people call it a proximity card. And you just tap it and, and get on the bus that way. The, we are still in the, in evaluating that technology and seeing if that makes sense. The cards are still kind of expensive to purchase. And if you just are buying eight dollars worth of rides and then throwing it away at the end of the month, that too can get expensive. And so we're evaluating if that makes sense to go down that road of having contactless cards. We're also, probably what we're seeing more interest in is maybe a trial of those cards, either with our Handy Band service or with our Big Red Express service. And is, to try it out and see how it works with a smaller level of service, which requires less investment upfront, but kind of gives us a feel of how, what the costs are and how, how that would work. And so that's something that's, that is being considered right now. But in the, in the transition of, of that too, we're seeing cell phones become a bigger and bigger deal. The possibility to pay a fare with a cellphone and jump over that proximity card altogether as a, as a possibility. And smart, again, smartphones, we don't have to purchase a card or anything for that person. They buy it online. We don't have to have distribution centers because it's something that can just happen electronically and then work it out so that either a device reads that phone on the, on the bus or they show it to the driver and the driver punches in a button. So we're probably seeing a, a more promising technology on the cellphone side right now than on the proximity card side. Just because I think we did, UNL did a survey among bus riders on the UNL routes. Ninety-five percent had smartphones. And so there's a huge, because there's so many people now with smartphones, that technology again is very promising. I know that was kind of a long answer.
I've got some follows up by me, real quickly. So, equipment-wise, are the, do the buses all have the ability to read a smart card or read a smartphone?
They don't have the ability to read a smartphone. They do have the ability to read a smart card. And we have looked into a couple of different companies with the smartphones. One company is associated with our parking meters here in town. And so we've been in contact with them. The, and then there's another new startup company that is also doing fare payment through cell phones. And they have it set so you basically can show it to the driver and the driver can recognize. You can't just, there's, take a screenshot and, and pass it around to your friends. It's, it's coded with a little moving bar and stuff like that so they can see that it's a legitimate fare. And, but there is driver interaction with that and so that's part of the evaluation on that, if that's workable. So yeah, a couple of things that we're still considering there.
I know that technology's ever changing. I guess as I travel around the world, I just, Hong Kong, Seoul, Korea, everywhere, they're just flashing these things across. And then that way you don't have the driver to have to interact, to punch in something. It's just so seamless. And I, I think as we talked a couple of years ago, the idea of having a park and ride type system too, so that it would work in the garages, so that everything's uniform and the whole. Is that, I see Ms. Esposito shaking her head, yes. I mean, it just seems like, I, I know there's costs in this, but isn't the cost coming down substantially?
It is coming down and, and you're right. It's all within that concept of having smarter cities. You know, maybe your library card can also be your bus pass. We've looked at combining cards with UNL because they use smart cards. One problem we found is they tend to use everything on their smart cards, everything to get into buildings, to various other uses. So we haven't found a compatibility with UNL, but to look at, yeah, those other potential opportunities. Bike sharing is something that's coming and they're also looking at smart cards and a possibility of combining with that.
If you did cards, you talked about the cost of that, and if you have an eight dollar pass, why not, well, I was in Seoul, Korea and I lost my card for the subway, so I had to pay five dollars to get a, or $10,001, whatever, to get a new card. Can't we just charge that or?
We can, yes.
It just seems like, that would be a fair way to do it so that it puts the responsibility on the user and then he or she would have it indefinitely.
Mike had asked you a question earlier today about the transfer station. So with the new schedule coming out tomorrow, could you tell us a little bit about how that's going to work?
Absolutely. So one of the concerns that was raised is, okay, I get down to Golds, I'm still out in the cold. Did you really not make it better for us? And the answer to that is yes, we did make it better. So right now, the transfers are, are not very timed very well. Under the new Pult system that is created, you'll basically come into Golds on the bus. You can wait on that bus until your bus arrives, get off your bus, get on the other bus, and then go on your way. So literally, you don't have to go into a building to stay warm. You don't have to go into a bus shelter. It's been timed to work, so you're getting off one bus and getting on another bus. And again, that's one of the things that we will closely monitor is making sure our timing is very good on these routes so that it's working like it's supposed to. And then if there are some, if you're traveling outside the downtown, you may have to wait fifteen minutes for a transfer. That's what we do have the bus shelters for and the bus shelters are heated as well. So there, there may be people that have that need that are not traveling downtown.
Can I just follow up on Cindy's question about the app? Is the old Star Trans app still functional until the new one is up and running? Or can you explain how it'll, how that'll work?
Yes. So the, we have two companies that, two private companies that have done apps for Star Trans. One of them is relatively recent. And both apps should, in contacting them, they've said they will automatically be updated with the new data that starts tomorrow, that their system becomes automatically updated. We'll see how well that works. It's still a little bit uncertain. And so we expect a smooth transition with that. But both companies have done a great job of providing those apps for the general public and they're, they're getting a lot of use. So I think we'll see that as a seamless transition and also not a cost to the city to have private companies out there, private individuals doing that.
So for the foreseeable future, if you don't have a copy of the, the schedule in paper copy and you're out standing at a, you know, on the street and you want to catch the bus, where's the best place to go on your phone to find the schedule? Is it your website or is it one of these apps or they're sort of equal, equally good?
Either or. The apps are designed to tell you when the next bus is coming so you can actually see the bus on the map and, and when it will arrive. Our website has, also has a, a real-time bus tracker on it, but for the most part, you can get static schedule information on our website. And it has been redesigned to be better utilized on mobile devices. So things, we're getting, yeah, lots of good feedback on the website that that's working well for people. So the website's a great place to go, those phone apps are a great place to go. And in the future, our bus stops are equipped to have schedule information at the bus stop itself as well. They'll have schedule holders on them so we can, that's not going to happen from day one, but that's down the road a little bit to actually have schedule information at those bus stops.
Thank you. It's really, these are great changes and the signage is beautiful and it ties not only into the, the sort of chamber themed or chamber logo, but I notice the Downtown Lincoln Association logo is tied into some of it as well. So nice to see those synergies.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have a meeting in fifteen minutes?
Okay, we can be adjourned.
Mike, are a lot of your buses converted to nap?